Welcome to the Monday, August 12th, Issaquah City Council Committee Work Session. We have a number of items tonight. We have some folks in the audience from the public, and I want to let them know that we are going to take public comment after each of the items that we have before us before we move on. Although nothing this eve -- we're not going to take action on anything this evening, we will take your public comment. So with that, we're going to start off with ID 0447, which is the 2019 Shoreline Master Program Periodic Update with Doug Jormick, Assistant Planner, and Alex Kapron, Consultant. Come on in, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Doug Jormick, Assistant Planner with Development Services, and this is Alex Kapron, our consultant with the Watershed Company. And for the past several months, we've been working on the Shoreline Master Program periodic update. So what is the Shoreline Master Program? Shoreline Master Program are a set of development regulations that apply within shoreline jurisdiction. A shoreline jurisdiction is defined as 200 feet upland from shorelines of the state. Shorelines of the state are classified as streams with a mean annual flow of 20 cubic feet per second or more, or 20 cubic feet per second or more annual flow, lakes greater than 20 acres, and all marine waters. So for the city of Issaquah, our shorelines of the state consist of Issaquah Creek, the east branch of Issaquah Creek, and Lake Sammish. Here is a map of what is shoreline jurisdiction throughout the city. The different colors that can kind of tell what they are, those are shoreline environmental designations. So those are similar to zoning, and they have specific uses that are allowed within History since the last update. So the last time that our Shoreline Master Program was updated was with the comprehensive update in 2013. And since then, we've adopted the Central Issaquah Design and Development Standards. We've also annexed Lake Sammish State Park. And then recently, Washington Legislature adopted a rule for periodic review, and now all municipalities that have shorelines of the state must update their Shoreline Master Programs every eight years. And then they have developed a schedule, and ours happens to be now in 2019. So the purpose of this periodic update is largely to address recent amendments to state law and ecology guidance. And Department of Ecology provided us with a gap analysis that highlighted all of the rural changes that have happened since our last update. Since this is an opportunity for us to open up the Shoreline Master Program, we, as staff at Feldman Services, wanted to make some edits ourselves. One would be to make it easier to navigate for staff and residents utilizing hyperlinks, changing or updating obsolete zoning references that are in it, and then also consistency with recently adopted plans. Periodic update will not reevaluate the ecological baseline. So part of the 2013 update, there was an inventory and characterization report that analyzed all of city of Issaquah's shoreline of the state and developed what is called an ecological baseline. And with -- we are not going to reevaluate that because if we were complying with our Shoreline Master Program since 2013, then we wouldn't have had any degradation of that ecological baseline, which also means we are not going to assess the known at loss criteria except for any of our proposed amendments. And then we're not going to change any of the shoreline jurisdictions or environmental designations. For tonight's work session, we're going to focus on the three areas that we use to update the Shoreline Master Program. The first one is the gap analysis provided by Ecology highlighting all of the legislative and rural changes since 2013. And then the following two are staff's work with updating with recent plans that have been adopted, and then any of the city identified changes since we've been implementing the Shoreline Master Programs since 2013. We've noticed some things that need some changing. So first, we'll start off with the gap analysis. In our gap analysis, there were five mandatory changes. Four were recommended, and 16, no changes were needed. Some of the highlights of what we needed to change were our nonconforming uses and development. So we had to change the definition of nonconforming use to be consistent with the rural changes, and then we added definitions for nonconforming development and nonconforming lot. Additionally, the prior Shoreline Master Program utilized an old wetland rating system. So in order to be current with ecology guidance, we have to include the 2014 wetland rating system within the Shoreline Master Program, and then also have a floodway definition that is consistent with ecology and FEMA. As staff, we were looking at consistency with adopted plans and regulations. So some of the plans that were adopted were the Park Strategic Plan and the Green Necklace Plan. And one of the big emphasis of Parks Plan are trails. In our Shoreline Master Program, we didn't have trails as a public use. So we've added trails in all shoreline environmental designations, and then also provided dimensional standards for those trails within shoreline You also had to update conflicts between shoreline environmental designation and zoning that had changed with updating of the central plan. So now the old zoning references from prior to 2013 have been updated to include Central Issaquah. With the city identified changes, we broke them into -- we, with our consultants, broke them into five sections. So strategic planning focused on our -- any of the changes that were required within, and implementing shoreline regulations. Then there were stormwater and MPDES regulations that we wanted to have to update there. Internal city process, clarify language. So there's a lot of obsolete references or just code language that just didn't really make sense. So we cleaned that up. So prior to coming here, we had gone to Planning Policy Commission, and we looked at some of the policy changes that we were including in the SMP. One of the changes was with SMP 3.3.1, which is the recreational element. So we changed that to be more broad of the city itself instead of focus more on parks and recreation. Some of the policies that were removed were because they have to comply with them anyways. So in the parking policy, it was that we should encourage low-impact development. We now require low-impact development, and if you couldn't do it, then there are certain criteria that you have to meet. But you have to start with actually implementing that first. So compiling all of our work together, we get to some of the amendments that we are proposing. The top one is, this is what is required. This is an example of what's required. So every eight years, the Office of Financial Management comes out with a cost threshold for shoreline exemption projects. So we needed to update that in the Shoreline Master Program to be consistent. And then also, existing structures within shoreline jurisdiction that need ADA retrofit will now also qualify as a shoreline exemption. On Friday, we received our initial determination from Ecology, and it was concluded that it was consistent with RCW and SMP guidelines from Ecology. There were some identified minor edits that we will be doing in the next few days to fully comply, and those include Lake Sammish Urban Conservancy Designation, so that's a shoreline environmental designation. Our GIS maps only have it as urban conservancy, so we need to go back and differentiate the urban conservancy for Lake Sammish, and then the urban conservancy designation for Issaquah Creek. And then there was how we incorporated some of our land use code and our special flood hazard area were done somewhat incorrectly, that if you couldn't comply with a portion of the land use code, that would then kick it into a shoreline variance process, and that's not what the intent is supposed to be. So we've just got to do a little bit of cleanup with that. And we'll be working with our consultants with Watershed to make those necessary edits. That, any questions?
Councilmember Hunt.
There's exceptions to the standard shoreline buffer section. It's on page 79 of the plan. I'm not sure if somebody has -- I'm not sure what page of our packet it is, but it's 79 of the plan. And it has a number of different exceptions to the buffer. The first one is where there are existing legally established residences that are located waterward or partially waterward of the established shoreline buffer and building setback within 50 feet of either side of the proposed residence. Such cases, the city may reduce the required shoreline buffer and building setback for new redevelopment so that the proposed residence has a view of the shoreline that is adequate and similar to adjacent residences. And there are two other exceptions. So I wonder if you could explain why these are exceptions.
So for the --
It's called exceptions to the standard shoreline buffer. It's on page 79 of the plan.
It's 101?
Yeah.
The exceptions are put in place largely so that structures and homes that are on the shoreline are of similar character to what was allowed next door to them. With the reduction, there would -- if you were -- so it's to maintain the similarity between structures. And that would, if you wouldn't allow that, then there would just be an additional process involved in going through a shoreline variance that may result in the same outcome as what is already allowed in here with the common line setback reduction.
Okay. So then, is the same reason applied to all three of the different variances? So the second one is that in those instances where one existing single-family residence is within 50 feet of the proposed residence, the city may reduce the shoreline buffer and building setback for new redevelopment of the proposed residence to a line drawn between the nearest corner of existing adjacent residence and the nearest applicable setback for the adjacent vacant purpose hall. Okay, and the same one for the third one?
Yeah, that's similar, but it's just instead of having a home there, it would just be a vacant lot.
Okay. And the same one for the third one, which is another sort of when you have structures in the buffer and put another structure in the buffer. Okay. So the -- I guess I would like a little bit more clarity on the response about the reason why it's in there. And so the reason why is because otherwise people would apply for a variance and get one?
Yes, they would be able to apply. And then that is ultimately, then that becomes a shoreline variance. It's additional process, and then it's a staff recommendation to Department of Ecology who has final approval on that.
So if these exceptions weren't there, then it would have to go through that variance process and be approved by Department of Ecology?
Any other questions? Councilmember Ray.
So what's the process in moving this plan forward? What are your next steps? What are the next touches? Where does it go from here?
From here, we've received our initial determination from Ecology. We're going to make the necessary edits. And then we were hoping to bring this for a council vote in September for adoption, in which case, we will send that back to Ecology, and then that will be our Shoreline Master Program.
Just to add to that, I believe it's, once it's submitted to Ecology and they accept it, it's 14 days from the date of acceptance that it becomes an ecology-adopted plan. So under this joint review process, so Ecology did their public comment period at the same time the city did, so they allowed for their comment, because as a statewide agency, they have to have a comment period for the SMP along with the city. So with the comprehensive update, they had their public comment period after City Council did their formal recommendation. So there was this added process that created a much longer timeline than was really necessary. So with this periodic update, because it's a lot smaller in scope, they brought the public comment to be in line with the city's. So once City Council approves this periodic update, and after we've gone through the initial determination, then yeah, it would be 14 days from the date of submission. It would become in effect.
Does that answer your question, Councilmember Ray?
I think it does. When did we do public comment on this?
Between May and June. The exact dates are --
Did we get much in the way of feedback from the public?
What's that?
Did we get much in the way of feedback from the public during public comment?
No, from Planning Policy Commission.
Councilmember Hunt?
Well, as well as rivers and streams, I believe, also reviewed it.
Yes, rivers.
So another commission.
Thank you.
So I do -- I have another question. Okay. So I asked Jason Mulvihill-Kunz to also look at this. He's the Salmon Recovery Manager for Wyre Eight, and since I'm the member of Wyre Eight, I wanted to see if there were things that could be strengthened to better align with salmon recovery. And so one of the questions he had is that it appears aquaculture and agriculture uses can be conditionally permitted in all shoreline environmental designations. And he wondered what non-hatchery activities have actually received permits to understand if these actions had an impact on salmon.
We haven't received any permits that I'm aware of in the time that I've been here for any aquaculture or agriculture activities.
So could those abilities to have those uses, could they be removed from the plan?
I am not aware of if they can be removed without going through a further process. Maybe you know a little bit more about aquaculture and dealing with other SMP jurisdictions, what they mean?
Yeah, some of the First Nation, so some of the tribal entities in this area are strong advocates for aquaculture in terms of fisheries and keeping stock up for salmon and species. So they, yeah, it's a conditional use, like you mentioned, but it would be hard to outright prohibit it in all shoreline environments.
Would it be possible to have an exception for the specific instance that you're talking about?
Yeah, and I don't have the code in front of me where it talks about aquaculture and what that all entails.
It's under permitted land uses on page 37 to 38.
The one thing, while you're looking that up, I just want to add one thing that, and this kind of relates to the exceptions question you had as well.
Okay.
The update, as you can see, is complying with state changes, cross-references, adopted plans, and it's not changing any of the content of the rules. So, and it's not that we can't do that, but if we were to make anything, any changes that changed people's rights, we would have to go back through the process, probably hold another hearing, and notify all the property owners. And so, again, it's not that we can't. I think the other piece that becomes tricky, especially with the setbacks, is that variances generally are granted if other property owners in the area have the same -- are allowed to do what you're asking to do. And so if, you know, that's why they use the homes on either side to create that line. And so I'm not sure, unless shoreline variances are different than other variances, I'm not sure that we could not grant those. So we would be creating potentially more process for the same result. And those exceptions, according to Alex, are very standard among communities. So we're not doing something different than other communities. I understand your concern, which is we want to provide the appropriate and most protection for our shorelines. And at the same time, we're trying to balance all the homes that have already been built. So I think that's where that rule came from. Don't know if that helps.
It helps, yeah. To clarify my point, it's that having homes built in the buffer already, we aren't actually talking about them. We're talking about a new development that's in a different space, but has other homes that have already been built in the buffer. So I'm not talking about the homes that are already there, but the exceptions for new homes.
Right. And it's, and while I understand the new homes, one way to look at it is that they have to fully comply with the buffers. Our buffers were set based on an inventory of every single lot, and that's where that came from. There are -- oh, it's, sorry, this is hard to read. You never know how well they're going to come across. But if you look, the way they came up with the 50-foot buffer is looking at the minimum and maximum, and that was kind of the median between the different types of buffers that were inventoried along the shoreline. And so we do have homes that are closer, and we're responsible to look at the circumstances, because if someone asks to be treated the same as their neighbors, even though it's a new lot, that is a typical criteria for a variance.
I have a few more.
Back to your regular programming.
Anybody else? Okay.
Keep going.
So another comment from Jason is that we could add language around directing the city to limit new docks and piers and seek opportunities to consolidate existing overwater structures, because overwater structures cause problems for salmon. There's nothing about that in there now. Wondered if we could do that?
We have dock dimension standards currently in there, and then we have, no, I don't think we have anything that we encourage joint use docks and piers, but we don't have much incentive to, I want to say, make people do it, but maybe that, I don't know if that's something that we can explore in this periodic update, or if that's going to be something else into the future.
Is there a language that actually encourages that in the plan?
I believe, yes.
Okay. I didn't see it. So if that, if there is --
It's not anything that we've added to it.
Okay.
But we have language for standards or joint use docks and piers, and then I will look at our policies and goals.
Okay, yeah, the suggestion was to add it to management policies, so I don't believe it's in that section. And then, okay, so then there's some other specific suggestions, so I'm just going to ask if we can make them. And then if there's some reason we can't, then you can let me know. So the next question would be if we can add language that would specify mitigation credit could only be used in cases where the original restoration work was not paid for by public habitat restoration grant funding? Those are the regulations.
What page are you referencing?
Let's see. It's under section 5.6.2.
Councilmember Hunt, I want to ask, on this, how would you feel about noting these issues and discussing these issues and asking the administration to come back with a written response to us about whether these would be possible and what the potential impacts would be?
Okay, that'll be fine.
Okay.
Because I, these sound very interesting, and I, this issue about salmon not doing well under docks, I have heard back in 2011 when we were talking about this the last time. So I would be interested to know what options there are out there on that one. I just want to make sure they have a chance to offer a comprehensive response.
Okay, yeah, and I also, and I realize that these are detailed, but I also wanted to make sure that we, because we're actually being presented with this information late in the process, as was stated by Lucy, you know, they already took it to get it approved, and they've already sent out the letters. And so it would be a process to make changes, but I think there are actually a lot of places where we could make meaningful changes that would improve salmon recovery, and this seems like the time to do it, since we're reviewing the plan. So I wanted to get this information out there earlier, relatively speaking. So there's a few other ones. They have to do with bulkhead removal and not giving incentives to just remove a bulkhead and then put a new one in, for instance, and then also lighting and making sure the lighting is salmon-friendly. So those are all things that we could do that would be meaningful, and I think now's the time. But I will happily send the letter, the information on.
Yeah, and I'll give you information about bulkheads. And there are requirements that you have to jump through if you wanted to, even a substantial repair to a bulkhead. The documentation that you have to provide from structural engineers, geotech engineers on the necessity of it.
And can I ask that on lighting? Is that the natural lighting under a dock, or is that artificial lighting around water spaces?
The concern is around the, well, so there's two. There is regulation in there already about dock transparency so that light can get through the docks. So that is in there. And then there's also a concern about artificial lighting and encouraging, or to the extent possible, requiring that people shield lighting that is on docks that is glaring into the water, because that has impacts on the behavior of salmon and behavior of predators, and is one of the big concerns of, for example, fish friends of Issaquah salmon hatchery and other groups that are trying to encourage salmon recovery. So to the extent where we can let people know about what they can do for artificial lighting, I think we should also put that in there. I have some specific wording that I'll send.
Great. Yeah, I know that predators hide in the dark underneath. When it's a solid dock, the predators will lurk underneath and bag the salmon.
Yeah.
Other, oh, Council Deputy President Matisse.
Thanks for the presentation this evening. I have a question that's high level, 10,000-foot level. So this review, the periodic review, is done every eight years. So the next time, this will be all the information that we have, and then the next time we'll go through any, the periodic review will be eight years from now.
Yeah, in 2027.
And if something major comes up in the meantime, what is the process if we needed to make some changes?
There are, working with Ecology, there are local processes to, if you need to make an amendment to your Shoreline Master Program, you would work with Ecology and -- go through the public process in, in order to do that. But there is a way to, to propose amendments to your SMP if something major catastrophic does come up and you want to make a change to it.
Thank you.
I have a question. Was Timberlake Park supposed to have some relation to the shoreline, or is it just, it's hatched just because it's a park, or does it, it's not covered?
It's, it's hatched, the hatchings, and it doesn't come through while on here, are about shoreline modification, so this green hatch is, it's natural, unmodified, so there's no hard-armoring bulkhead along the shore there. And then the different color hatchings, they don't come through, especially with the smaller parcels, are just identifying the same thing.
But my question is, Timberlake Park extends all the way down by I-90.
Yes.
Is there, does Timberlake, is Timberlake Park falling under these regulatory requirements?
Just the first 200 feet from the shoreline.
Okay, good. I thought there was something about it, because, I don't know.
Okay.
Because there's a trib there, but it's tiny, right?
Yes, and that's not a shoreline of the state.
Okay. Other questions? All right, thank you for that presentation. At this time, I will ask, well, first of all, Deputy City Administrator Snyder, is there anything else the administration wants to say about this topic?
I don't believe so, thank you. I think we look forward to seeing the questions that Councilmember Hunt would like to propose, and then we will work out a system to reply and respond to those questions that she poses, and make sure that the rest of council hears those answers as well.
Great. And with that, I'll ask if any members of the public, first of all, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I will ask if any members of the public want to address the council on this subject. Oh, people are holding evidently for, I can tell there's people who want to speak to us, but might be for, might be for later topics. So, with that, we will move on to our next topic, ID 0485, fluoridation policy discussion. And now that is going to be with Sheldon Lynn, the Public Works Engineering Director, and Robert York, our Engineering Manager, but I know that Deputy City Administrator Snyder wants to start off this presentation.
Thank you very much, Council President. Good evening. I just wanted to tee up this item a little bit for you, knowing that we have had members of the public write in some concerns over, their health concerns over fluoride in the waters. And I just wanted to provide some focus for where this presentation is headed. What the administration has focused the presentation on this evening are the technical and system components of our water facilities and infrastructure. We are not focusing on debating any health components of the fluoride discussion, we're really focusing on the water treatment system and the regional context within which we sit. So, I just wanted to provide that focus for us this evening, that that is really what you can expect to be hearing from this presentation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Bob York, Engineering Manager for Utilities in the Public Works Engineering Department, and alongside of me is Sheldon Lynn, the Public Works Engineering Director. I'm here tonight to discuss the topic of water fluoridation. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide information on policy and cost implications regarding fluoridation of the Isquah Water System. We'll provide background information, followed by a summary of our community outreach efforts, and then followed by recommended next steps. After the presentation, the council will have the opportunity to discuss the policy itself and ask questions. By way of background, early this year, the council adopted the 2018 Water System Plan. As many of you may recall, the, this effort include various policy discussions, including conservation, demand forecasting, supply strategies, system operations, and water treatment. As one of the next steps following Water System Plan adoption, the council specifically requested that there be a public discussion regarding fluoridation of the water supply in areas that don't currently receive fluoridated water. Another next step was to begin the initial design activities for the water treatment plant. A separate presentation follows this one on the subject in, in tonight's agenda. Now that the water treatment plant, early design activities have begun, the engineering team needs to know our fluoridation policy decision. Specifically, the team needs to know whether to either include fluoridation of the groundwater in the design of the treatment plant, or include a process to remove fluoride from the regional source water in the design of the treatment plant. So, the basic, basic policy question in the shortest number of words is, should the city's water utility fluoridate its water supply to its entire service area? The next few slides are, contain some maps. First, the city of Isquah. You can see on this map that the, within the city limits, that the areas that currently receive fluoridated water are shown in blue, and the uncolored areas are, within the city limits, are areas that currently do not receive fluoridated water. We did some statistical work, and including the Semamish Plateau, the area served by Semamish Plateau Water and Sewer District, about two-thirds of the residents of the city of Isquah currently receive fluoridated water. In general, areas within Isquah served by the city, they're receiving fluoridated water, include areas that, where the water is obtained from Isquah's regional supply source Cascade Water Alliance. In the areas served by Semamish Plateau Water District, those areas receive either and/or fluoridated water from Cascade Water Alliance, or from their wells, because that water district adds fluoride throughout its service area. This next, next map comes from the Washington State Department of Health. It shows the, statistically, what percentage of each county in the state of Washington, the percentage of people hooked up to the public water supply that receive fluoridated By fluoridated water, the, the WDOH means dentally significant fluoride levels, as shown on the title. The color blue shows counties where two-thirds of customers are served water that contains significant, or statistically, are dentally significant fluoride levels, including King and Snoomish County. The green represents one-third to two-thirds, and yellow is less than a third. Red dots are actually individual fluoridation facilities that purposely add fluoride to their surface water or groundwater to reach that level of fluoride. I think the key, key takeaway from this slide is that there's wide variability in the county in our state, but in our region, Central Puget Sound fluoridated water is very common. The three largest water systems, the big three, Seattle, Tacoma, and Everett, each fluoridate their major water supply. Here's a U.S. map showing similar patterns. You can see the percent of fluoride in each state, percent of people that receive fluoridated water in each state. Again, there's a wide variation across the country. Nationwide, well over 70% of people that are receiving water from public water supplies are provided with fluoridated water. This next slide, it shows a table that, with the two basic policy options and associated costs. One is to fluoridate the water, the groundwater, thus bring a consistent fluoride level to all people served by the Isquah Water System. The other is to remove fluoride from the regional water. Now, before I go on, there's a third option that we didn't consider, that you may be thinking about, which was the do neither option, either add fluoride or remove fluoride. We didn't put this option up here, because with this option, there would be a variable level of fluoride water, or fluoride in the water from the treatment plant. All customers receiving that water would have some level of fluoride, but that, we couldn't tell them how much. Customers need to know how much fluoride is in their water to make informed decisions for themselves and their families. So, looking closer at the two options, add, add fluoride to groundwater, we included, that's, that cost is included in the current cost estimate for the treatment plant, that is shown in the Water System Plan and, and our, and our current adopted CIP. This cost includes the capital and operating components to add fluoride to the well water. As you can see, the cost is very nominal, it would add up to less than a penny a day per customer. The other option's much more costly, removing fluoride from the regional water, not often done in, in, in our particular scenario. The cost includes capital costs for increasing the treatment plant size and for adding filtration process from the regional supply, land costs to accommodate a larger plant footprint, and additional long-term operating costs. The cost to remove fluoride, based on a planning level estimate, was prepared by our consultant, it would have a significant impact on rates. We're estimating that, in today's dollars, a bi-monthly bill for a resident would increase a nominal $25 to $26 every two months, which would represent roughly a 30% increase in the water bill. Final point is even with fluoride removal, certain areas of the city, namely Montrose, which is on the, high up on Cougar Mountain, and of course, those areas served by Semamish Plateau Water would still receive fluoridated water. I'll provide a quick summary of our community outreach, reach effort. Our Communications Department used various means of outreach to inform the community of the fluoride discussion. Some statistics are, nearly 5,000 people were, were, the outreach reached nearly 5,000 people using various social media, including the Isquah Insider, that was, the fluoride discussion was included in that newsletter for the last two weeks, and, and was reached over, or nearly 1,600 people. Facebook was used, a calendar item was placed on our website, fluoride webpage now exists on our website as well. Twitter was used with periodic posts informing about the open house. And Nextdoor was, was used and it generated almost 1,500 impressions to residents that have an address in Isquah. Some feedback from Nextdoor, mostly, there are about 10 comments received, most questions involved cost, if the council has already approved the plan, and how it's going to be funded. Social media, we received one negative response about fluoridation, or one response that was opposed to fluoridation, and some emails came in that were actually supporting fluoridation. So, the open, the open house itself was held last Wednesday, here in the City Hall Eagle Room, five o'clock to seven, or seven, 6:30, about seven attendees showed up, one reporter plus, not included in that number. Five residents were, or five of those attendees were Isquah residents. Slightly over 50% of the open house attendees were concerned about fluoridation, and some provided material for staff to review. Our recommendation is fluoridate the entire water supply of those, within the city water utility service area, for the following reasons. One, so that residents and businesses will have consistent water quality wherever you live in the city. Two, is the, this fluoridation may help reduce the incidence of dental cavities and, and tooth decay. A third reason is it supports a water system plan mainly by the creation of supply delivery redundancies and resiliency planning. And the fourth one is a, it's a much lower cost than the alternative. Proposed next steps. We have an additional study session, if needed, in September to further discuss this, and eventually we'll prepare an agenda bill for policy action as, potentially as early as the second September regular council meeting. Last slide. Feedback we'd like or discussion topics that you may want to consider include, does the council need more information on, or have questions or concerns regarding the staff recommendation to fluoridate the entire city water supply, service area? Has the public engagement, engagement to date been adequate, and does council have feedback or direction on proposed next steps? Thanks.
So, I'm going to first ask if council has technical questions, then I think we'll take public comment, and then I think we can talk about how we feel about the answers to some of these questions. Do we have technical questions for staff? Councilmember Walsh.
So, in reading over the Washington code associated with this and the fluoridation treatment plan, my understanding, and I want to see if this is correct, is if there is fluoride added to any source of water, and then there's blending happening, basically, if we don't add fluoride, and thus there's an uncertain level, that would not fit within the optimization criteria required by the Washington Department of Health, because they require 75% of daily samples be between .6 and .8 kilograms per liter. So, I'm just trying to confirm that, basically, it is not legally possible for us to bring in water that is fluoridated, and then mix with water that is not without fluoridating that.
To be able to document that criteria, we don't know whether we'd be able to document the ability to comply with that code, because we wouldn't know with blending, what the concentrations of fluoride would be throughout the system. Thereby, it also makes it very difficult to communicate to the users how much fluoride's in their water when they're drinking it. You blend, it just, it'll depend upon where the sources are introduced, how close you are to those sources, how far away you are, a number of different factors come into play. So, we would have a hard time complying with that code.
Let me ask the question maybe in a different way. The Washington Department of Health has a water fluoridation reporting system that it requires if you're adding, or if your water is fluoridated. Would you have to, do you have to do that at this point? Do you have to take the monthly samples and submit it?
In the areas that we say we have fluoride in them, yes, we do.
Okay. And so, it, is it our understanding that if we blended the water in a water treatment plant, that, and didn't add fluoride to the stuff that was not fluoridated, that we would have to do that?
No, we would not be able to claim that the water is fluoridated.
And that's the only reason-
But we, but we would have to tell the people that they would be receiving some fluoride somewhere between .1 and .7.
Yeah.
We'd have to inform them, but we couldn't tell them how much it is.
So, basically, what, what I was concerned with is, if we were in that situation, that you would be reporting something and we wouldn't fall within the criteria, and thus we would be, have problems with the state-
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to say-
But you're saying, we wouldn't have to fill out that form.
No, we wouldn't have to fill out that form, because we're not claiming the water would be fluoridated, but we'd have to inform them that there is fluoride in the water.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Ray.
So, I'm sort of all about process today. So, you mentioned bringing back an agenda bill possibly in September. When do we- When do we have to make a decision so as not to affect the water treatment plant timeline?
In the next month or two, I'd say, because we're, you'll hear a presentation shortly about the treatment plant.
Okay.
We can't wait six months, for example, but I would say.
But when we hear the presentation on the treatment plant, we'll get some sense of when we need to have the specs, specifications nailed down, including fluoridation?
Yeah, to clarify it a little more, one of the major things that we're doing this year as part of that process, and the consultants will speak to it a little bit, is trying to determine how much property the city's going to have to acquire. And to add the fluoridation process is going to increase the size of the facility and thereby change the size of the parcel that we're going to need to purchase. And so, in the next couple of months, we're going to need to have a fluoridation decision.
Great, thanks.
I'll ask, so we're presently filtering to make sure that we don't have any PFOS in the drinking water, correct?
In one well.
In one well.
Right now.
What does that cost us per year?
It's actually, because it's working so well, it actually is not a, relatively speaking, a major cost. The carbon's been in there for two-plus years now, and it's only reached the, hasn't even reached the midpoint of the first bed. So, there is a backwash procedure that they use, do every month, so it's a little bit of labor, a little bit of, obviously, the carbon at some point will need to be replaced, but it's, I don't have the exact number, but it's relatively low compared to what it could have been, or what we thought it was going to be when we first put the system in.
Can you use the same technology to remove fluoride?
No, it needs a, actually, activate aluminum technology where you lower the pH, fluoride gets absorbed onto a different kind of media than carbon. Then you got to raise the pH back up, so that would be the, what our consultants who are here helping me with this would tell me is the, would be the technology we'd choose for fluoride removal. I mean, more expensive technologies than that, like reverse osmosis would work too, but that would be even higher cost than the one I mentioned.
So, a while back, we had a lengthy conversation that led to the conclusion that we needed a new water treatment facility, and we talked about a number of options, and we sort of did a series of trades, and we talked about the costs involved in that. Might we have come to a different conclusion? I see 20 bucks per household per month, and I say, let's call that 3 million bucks a year, just to pick around number. Might we have come to a different fundamental drinking water conclusion as a city if we had had to cook in $3 million a year to address fluoride? In other words, we're saying that water treatment plant adding fluoride is, what, 20 to 30 bucks per household, but we might have actually picked a fundamental different direction to go, you know, if we had a requirement to remove fluoride, yes? Like buying all of our water.
So, like buying all of our water.
Yeah.
If the council chose to not want to provide fluoridated water, then you would then have to remove it, and it would, you know, cost 25, 30, 25, $26 every other month on top of the current rate structure. I'm trying to make sure I'm answering all of your questions here. The question about centralized treatment versus non-centralized treatment, I believe that was part of your question.
The question was just, I only have one question. You said a bunch of questions.
Okay.
I just had one, which is, could we have come to a different conclusion about the fundamental architecture if this option had in it 3 million dollars a year for removing fluoride?
The option for centralized treatment? No, because you would have had to defluoridate the regional supplies that comes in regardless of centralized treatment or not. Your choice would have been the same, most probably.
Other technical questions? Councilmember Hunt.
I'm not, so, that raised a question for me, which is just, I guess, if, is there, would it be an option to buy all of our water? That would be, and I think we discussed that previously, but to purchase, so right now, we purchased some water from Cascade Water Alliance and some not. That if we purchased all water from Cascade Water Alliance for the entire city, that would all be the same water quality, same chemistry, water chemistry, right? So, is that, I think we discussed it previously.
It would be, but this is far less expensive to add fluoride to your groundwater than it is to buy all regional water. There were a number of different items in the regional water conversation as an option for your supply. If you were to purchase all regional water, that means you would have to also be paying a large amount of RCFCs to the region on the pretext that you're no longer going to use your production wells, because the inter-local agreement requires that. And I believe from past presentation, thank you, I got handed a cheat sheet here, the all-regional option and retaining your wells was about $76 million. To blend groundwater with regional water was about $39 million, and that had an assumption of fluoridating the groundwater system. And then, the other was all regional water, but transfer the wells to CWA, which means you gave up your rights and your ownership of your wells, but it also protected you from having to pay those RCFCs, and that was about $59 million. So, it was still more cost-effective to stay with the option that you guys are, have moved forward with.
Thank you.
Over what time interval with those numbers?
I believe that time interval, 20-year timeframe.
Okay.
Present value, 20 years.
So, a 39 versus a 59 option, but if the 39 option required, let's say, $3 million a year to remove the fluoride, that might actually be more expensive than the $59 million option. If this council decided that it didn't want fluoride, then that 59 million, that $59 million option would not have fluoride, or would?
It would. It would, you'd have to have $3 million for both if you wanted to remove fluoride.
So, there's, the regional supply is fluoridated?
Yes, it is.
I see.
That's what's creating the discussion, is we're introducing fluoridated water into the system, because demands are exceeding, will exceed our groundwater supply source.
Other technical questions before we take public comment? I'm seeing none, so thank you very much. At this point, I will ask if any members of the community want to speak to this issue. If you do, I'm happy to offer you three minutes up at the dais, ma'am, if you'll come forward. And if you want to give your name in relation to the city, you're welcome to.
Hello, Susan Naville, wrote my address. I don't know how formal this is. I was one of the people attending the meeting, one of the seven, and I wanted to thank the Public Engineering Department, because they did spend a lot of time discussing this and educating me on the complexity of this water fluoridation in regards to the new water treatment plant. I know we're not supposed to be, you're not deciding today fluoride or not, but it seems that's all we're discussing, so that's what I focused on. And from the agenda, I took out of there three issues that you're looking at, and the first one was, does council need more information or have questions or concerns regarding the staff recommendation to fluoridate the entire city water area? So, I appreciate this is a big decision, especially with the limited knowledge we have and the lack of a PhD in the sciences. But also, you have to weigh out cost versus health, and also versus public opinion. And in my research, I noted the only options presented are to fluoridate the water or defluoridate the water. And I was wondering if there are other options, which I know you brought up, but what about flexibility? We build into the design a way to turn on or off fluoride at a future date? Today fluoride may be the decision, but what about eight years from now? Flexibility to react in the future might be the most cost-effective and healthy conscious decision we can make. The second topic was public engagement. As an interested resident, I don't believe it was really sufficient enough, and I know you went through a lot of areas that you did, but if you're not a, if you're not educating the Issaquah public on fluoridation, it's important for all residents, not just the few that are signed up for the email alerts and on Facebook. I happened to open the email that day, and I sent it to other people who had totally missed it in their email boxes. So, but I was really astounded when only two other people were at the open house when I walked in, when I arrived at 5:45. So, scheduling between 5:00 and 6:30 PM a meeting on a weekday amidst such a large percentage of the population from attending, and also, I also found it really hard to comprehend the intent of the open house and also the purpose of the work session today. So, with all those elements involved, I really feel that I can say I don't think it was sufficient. And I know a lot of you know me over the last two years, and I've spent a lot of time being publicly engaged, and my intent is not to criticize, but to find solutions. So, good communication and clarity build public trust, we all know that. So, please consider flexible alternatives in the design process and request additional public engagement. Thanks.
Thank you very much for your comment. Is there anyone else? I'm going to go with this gentleman who stood up in the back, and then I'll go to Bill.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm Dr. Bill Osmanson. I have a master's in public health. For the first 25 years after I graduated from school, dental school, my master's in public health, I promoted water fluoridation to city councils, and one of my patients came to me and said, "Bill, have you looked at the science recently?" And I said, "Well, no." And they said, "But is it, does it really work?" And I said, "Well, I see it in my patients, that it's effective." But I was wrong. What I was seeing was socioeconomics. Fluoridation is not safe, don't do it. It's not effective, don't do it. You've been given flawed options here. One is to fluoridate everything or take out fluoride from everything. You could just leave it the way it is, for one thing. That option was not presented to you. Let's look at this thing more from a scientific position, because that's not been done. We're trying to put .7 parts per million of fluoride in the water. That's crazy. Why? I don't see you drinking fluoridated water. Most people don't drink the water. If they're wealthy enough, they'd buy the bottled water, tastes better. But where we have our real problems is the poor. The poor drink the water, or if you add stuff to the water to make it taste better, why then they do? How much water do you drink? Well, some don't drink hard-nanny water, some, the average drinks about 1 liter, 90th percentile drinks about 2 liters, some people drink 10, 12 liters of water a day. So, although you think you're taking care of this dosage pretty good for the water, you're not treating water, you're treating people. And they are drinking different amounts of water so that the dosage is completely out of line with, no one knows. Not only that, but we're getting lots of fluoride from other sources. Some people swallow their toothpaste, some people take fluoride medications. I had a good friend who almost died, we gave her fluoride antibiotics, saved her life. Anesthesia, general anesthesia, huge amounts of fluoride. There are many sources. Organic foods have less. Don't use fluoride toothpaste has less. Now, the CDC, if you look at all their documents, I've spent about 10,000 hours in this, I'll try not to do that tonight, but if you look at the CDC data.
Good, because you've got about a minute left, so 1,000 is just bad.
If you look at the CDC data, the effective age range potential is while the tooth is developing, not while it's in the mouth, it's too dilute, but while it's developing. And that's where we have our biggest problem, because it's only effective until maybe around the age of 6, 7, 8, before the teeth erupt into the mouth. So, you're going to fluoridate everybody, give them what the EPA calls a contaminant. In other words, you're going to contaminate the water, and what the FDA calls a drug, because your intent is to treat people. You are the doctors. Now, the CDC says it's effective, but they don't look at safety. The EPA says, "Oh, oh, oh, no, 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 we're prohibited by Congress in the Safe Drinking Water Act from having, adding fluoride to the water." But we will guide those who choose to fluoridate, to help them do a better job, a more accurate job.
Bill, I'm going to ask you to move to closure at this point, I've given you more than three minutes.
Okay. You are the doctors that are deciding how much fluoride, like the World Health Organization says getting fluoride from all different areas. You decide that. You are the ones that are the doctors, you're the FDA, you're the ones who evaluate dosage, safety, and efficacy. How much is effective? How much do we need? Not for the water, but for each person, okay?
I'm going to, thank you very much for your comments.
Could I do a presentation sometime in the future?
If this subject comes up again, we will consider, we, you've been good about sending us material. I don't know is the answer to the question about giving a presentation, but I want to thank you for your comments tonight, but I give everybody three minutes.
This is very serious for the development of the human brain of the children, okay?
Thank you, thank you so much for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to us this evening? Bill?
I'm Bill Freysinger, I live at 415. I'm Bill Freysinger, I live at 415 Southeast Bush Street in Old Town, so I'm part of the area that is not fluoridated. I grew up with fluoridated water, and I feel my brain is all right, although some people would disagree with that. At any rate, I think that we ought to go with the fluoridated water. I think it makes more economic sense. However, I don't see any serious problem with having some areas, with having some areas with just a limited amount of fluoridation and not knowing how much, and just be told that you have less than the recommended amount. I don't see any problem with that. By the way, I also drink tap water. I think drinking water in plastic bottles is just silly, although I'm amazed at the number of people, particularly low-income people, that do drink bottled water. Any rate, so I encourage you to go ahead with fluoridated water. Blending and not knowing the exact amount doesn't bother me. I should, you might also consider building a plant that is capable of fluoridating, but it doesn't have to fluoridate. It would seem to me that would be just an extremely simple modification. If fluoridation, if you do fluoridate, and later on, data becomes available that indicates it really is dangerous, I would think the whole area would quit using it, so you wouldn't have to defluoridate just your water. I mean, if you think it's horribly dangerous, but Seattle thinks it's perfectly safe, there's something screwy going on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Rodney Fowler. I'm a resident of the city of Issaquah, specifically Issaquah Highlands, so I would be in one of the neighborhoods that is fluoridated, and I would, I'm also an employee of a large dental benefits company, so this, I am interested in this discussion on multiple levels. As a citizen of Issaquah, I'm certainly interested in, on the basis of the cost repercussions for all of the citizens of the city, because clearly, there's an enormous price differential in these options that would hit people. As a matter of good conscience and what I have learned over my years in the dental business with respect to public health, there are countless independent credible sources of scientific research in support of the health benefits and safety of water fluoridation. While casting doubt is a science to itself, I think that the, I think that the literature is quite clear, and I commend your staff for providing links to EPA and CDC information on the city of Issaquah website. For my part, I'd be very happy to share statements in support of the efficacy and value of water fluoridation from the Washington State Board of Health and from the six deans of the University of Washington School of Public Health. There is a strong scientific consensus in support of this, and as I learned about this disparity, I was actually quite taken back. I had no idea. I had no idea, as a resident in the Highlands, that folks down here didn't get water fluoridation. It genuinely surprised me. Now that I understand the way the water is sourced, I can certainly appreciate the reason for that. But as a matter of good public health and equity in public health, I'm here to speak very much in favor of community water fluoridation for all in Isiqua.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Ma'am?
My name's Linda Shepherd, and I live at 14985-256 Avenue Southeast. So I'm in Miramont, outside of downtown Isiqua, but I do drink Isiqua water. So my dentist shared with me his thought-provoking comments and position paper on the use of fluoride as an additive to drinking water. After reading that, I also read "The Fluoride Deception," a book by an investigative journalist, Christopher Bryson. I'm a scientist with a PhD in biochemistry, and I'm averse to emotion-based, fear-based rhetoric. But these sources appeal to me because they are research-based. They're carefully referenced and based on scientific as well as historical research into how fluoride got into our water in the first place. After evaluating these sources, I concluded that fluoride does more harm than good. In summary, the effectiveness, safety of fluoride became firmly established paradigm based on incomplete knowledge. No clinical trials have proved that fluoride is safe and effective. It was never approved by the FDA. The EPA does not oversee the safety or purity of fluoridation products. In fact, no government agency oversees this product, and no long-term toxicology studies have ever been submitted on it. In 2006, a 450-page report from the National Research Council, a branch of the National Institutes of Health, concluded the water fluoridation of 4 parts per million, the level used at that time, was unsafe. Large-scale, broad-based, well-controlled epidemiological studies published in peer-reviewed medical or scientific journals showed no substantial scientific difference between fluoridated and non-fluoridated communities. The World Health Organization gathered data on tooth decay trends over several decades in 20 different countries. They found a significant decline in decay in 12-year-olds since the early 1970s. But this decline is virtually the same in countries that are fluoridated, partly fluoridated, or non-fluoridated. The National Research Council report stated, quote, "The damage to teeth caused by severe enamel fluorosis," which is whitish, brownish, or pitted spots on tooth enamel, "is a toxic effect." The Centers for Disease Control reported in 2005 that 32% of American children have dental fluorosis. The American Dental Association downplays this as merely cosmetic, but it can result in expensive dental treatment.
I'm going to ask you to move to closure on this. You can summarize.
Yeah. The fluoride added to drinking water is not pharmaceutical-grade sodium fluoride. It's a waste product of the phosphate fertilizer industry that is 20% hydrofluoric acid and 76% wastewater containing varying amounts of heavy metals. This material is too toxic to discard legally and too expensive to dispose as hazardous waste. And yet, the same material unchanged is added to our drinking water. Enamel formation process is similar to bone formation, and we cannot rule out a similar process occurring in the bone.
I want to thank you for your comments.
It also has neurotoxic effects.
Is there anyone else this evening wishing to speak? Ma'am?
My name is Beth Smith. The slogan for fluoride basically has been that it is safe and effective. We only need to look back in history to see products that have been promoted as safe and effective in their time to see how this holds true. Hundreds of years ago, people were encouraged to drink their urine to whiten their teeth. And it did. It also made their teeth fall out. Not such a good idea. Tobacco was promoted to make people's lungs healthy. Did it? We know the end of that story. Lead was added to our fuel and to our paint, and we know it caused serious brain damage. It was not safe or effective. Coal was promoted as a clean source of energy. Now we know that coal is a major pollution for our air. The evidence supports that if fluoride is to be helpful, it is only when it is applied topically, not put in our drinking water. So I would implore you, as you look at this issue, it cannot just be dollars and cents, it has to be on our health. And there is serious evidence to support that it is not safe or effective and can cause serious long-term damage to all of us, especially our children.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else this evening wishing to speak? I think we have at least one more.
So, I'm Connie Marsh. I live in an unfluoridated, formerly really tasty water section that now I can barely drink because of the massive buildup of chlorine on my street. So I rarely drink the water, because when I turn on the faucet, it just reeks of chlorine. It's mainly because I'm on a dead end. And so this is an example of, yes, we have chlorine that's supposed to be a certain part of the water, but our system is imperfect and old, and there is no way to ensure the amount that my tap water would actually get. And we have a lot of dead ends in our water system in this town, and so when you start blending and adding to it, then you start creating potential damage and harm. So, I'm sort of fluoride ambivalent. I don't know enough to know. I am highly public engagement-oriented. So when I got notice that there was a fluoride meeting, and I hadn't seen it anywhere, I sort of lit fire. And on Nextdoor, they'd put it in events. If you use Nextdoor, you know nobody uses events. So, Leeson put it in general, and then people started talking about it, but that was a day before the public meeting. And I almost missed the public meeting, because it's like, well, of course it's going to be like 6:30 or 7:00 or something like that. So at 5:15, I go, or it's at 5:00 to 6:30, and I am like way away. So I ran to get to the last 15 minutes of this meeting. So then you say Facebook. Yeah, right. I don't think we got the public. When you get seven people to a public meeting, and the main part of the conversation occurred yesterday and today on Nextdoor, you are not adequately talking to your community on an incredibly important matter. So, we do this all the time. It's not just fluoride, and it needs to be fixed, and it never is. And then I had to run here, because I'm hearing that we did a great job on community engagement. And, you know, my head started steaming. I got two green lights, though, so I made it in plenty of time. So, then there is the money question, and would we have chosen a different pathway? Well, one of those pathways was, what if we don't blend and we continue to fluoridate others, and we find patches that we can fluoridate, but try to keep as much of the water separate as possible? And there was some conversation of that. Not all of town needs to be fluoridated necessarily, but I don't think you got fine-grained enough information. And then there's the question, okay, fluoridate it all, because it's cheaper. How much money does that loosen up to provide the people who don't want fluoride with some sort of personal system to keep the fluoride out of their water, because you are basically forcing fluoride upon people who don't want fluoride? Is there such a mechanism? Can you do it at your faucet? How much does that cost? Because if you're saving millions and millions of dollars, yet people don't want fluoride in some places, how else can you solve that problem? So, other ways to solve the problem, we've got to break, we've got to fix our broken communication system in a way that people actually get the information and actually can engage with their community and not fake it. I'm tired of faking it. And then I think you need to hear more, because you've only heard two days of public knowledge. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else this evening wishing to present to, or to provide comment? No? All right. Thank you for that public comment, and with that, I will open it up to my fellow council members. If you could give that to the deputy city administrator, and she can, she'll make sure we get copies. Thank you. Yes, council member Walsh?
Okay. So I heard a few questions here that I just want to bring up. So somebody said, "If the regional water were to change to be unfluoridated because the science changed, and we were choosing to fluoridate via a water treatment plant, would we be able to turn off our fluoridation at that time?"
Yes.
Okay, great. What would be, or can you guys look into and help us understand what would be the cost of developing a water plant that is flexible, which would allow us to start adding fluoride, if that is the way that the council decides, but later change to remove it from regional water, if we wanted to go that method? We can get that cost in the future?
We can design the facility to do as you said. What the ramifications are is that if you decide to remove later, we're back with heavy capital expenditures, property purchase, and also, you know, building the treatment plant to do that, to remove, and then you increase your operating costs again. It's just adding...
So you're saying there's no way...
You're just delaying, you're just delaying the process of the $25 to $26 every other month. You're just pushing that decision further. Out.
I'm not sure I understand that. I'm saying, can you develop a water treatment plant that is flexible to provide both options, if a later council were to decide, versus the idea of overhauling a water treatment plant, which I assume would be more expensive?
We can design and build a treatment plant that can do both. Your costs will increase over and above what you currently are planning to spend in the estimates that we've previously been working with.
Yeah. And what I'm asking is, can we get a sense of what that cost would be, so that we can make that decision?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. And then I heard a lot of questions about why we're looking at creating a water plant to blend the water versus just continuing with our current situation, which is, some areas are fluoridated because they're coming from regional and others are not. It's my understanding that we're doing this because we have several different wells that we have to visit, which have several different problems, and we have to monitor their water independently, whereas coming in centrally will allow us to manage all of the water in a blended. Is that correct?
That's right. What the centralized treatment plant does is it creates efficiencies in the operations of the treatments, the different types of treatments that we have to do at our four different wells. Because of the complexities of the water chemistry, centralization actually is better for the city in the long term. When it comes to introducing the regional water into it, the current thought is that we would be treating all the wells at one location, creating a consistent chemistry that's compatible with the regional water. We wouldn't be running the regional water through the plant. We would be creating, changing the chemistry of our groundwater to meet that of the regional water. That way, we're saving on treatment costs that way. That's one of the reasons why, when you want to eliminate the fluoride or remove it, we're now running that much more water through the plant, through an additional process...
So it sounds like that actually says, the idea of creating a plant that is flexible, that would allow us to start by adding water, or adding fluoride to the well water, but later change to removing fluoride from the regional water, isn't really what we're talking about, because if we're talking about creating a plant to add water, or add fluoride to our well water, and not put the regional water through that, so designing for both scenarios...
So you can design for both scenarios, but it's going to add capital costs substantially. If you do that and you do not remove the fluoride, you'll have some operational costs in the term for which you decide you want to just keep everything fluoridated. But at the end of the day, if you want to not have fluoridated water, then your plant is there, capital-wise, but you've been having a mothballed facility for some time, so you may have some reconditioning to do before you start it up again.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand the full situation. Thank you.
No, good questions. Could you put the list of questions to which the city was hoping to get clarity from council back up, just so that we have those as we're having this conversation? And I should say, interim city administrator Snyder, did you have something you wanted to say? Because it looked like you had your mic on for a second.
I just wanted to make sure that it was clear. I think one of the, an aspect of one of the questions that council member Walsh had asked was regarding the well water. And I think Director Lynn had mentioned that the Cascade Water Alliance, water, the regional water, is fluoridated, as we've discussed earlier. And one of the reasons that, one of the components of the water systems plan is that we need to plan on having more regional water as our population grows, and we want to meet the needs of the population. That's also true in cases of drought, when demand exceeds supply for the current wells that we operate. And so, for that reason, we need to take into account the availability of regional water, and that's why that regional water will be available to all Isiqua residents as we plan moving forward. And I'm going to look to our resident expert, Director Lynn, to correct me if I have that, any of that incorrect, but I believe that helps to answer your question. Good.
So, I don't see any mics on yet. Oh, council member Ray.
Couldn't pass that up. Okay, I just got a clarification. We are not going to be treating regional water in the treatment facility. We are just going to be blending and treating well water in the regional facility, in the water treatment facility. Is that correct?
That is correct. The regional water will be introduced into the grid, the water system grid, at different points in the system, and then with one point being close to the treatment plant. And then we'll be treating all of our groundwater to be consistent water quality, so that we can then put the groundwater into the system of which regional water is in.
Okay.
I.e., blending the water at that point.
You know, I'm sure that that's what you said when we were talking about the water system plan. It's just not what I recall in the discussion around the water system plan, so that's fine. Couple of comments. May, this is not a question at all. I don't think this is a cost question, this is a public health question, and we haven't really had any kind of briefing yet on the public health discussion part of fluoride. I mean, we've had some wonderful comments from the public, but we haven't had any kind of briefing there. So I don't see how we can make any kind of decision on this until we get some clarity around what the public health questions are. I agree with Susan and Connie. Seven people does not adequate community engagement to me, so we've got to find a better way, and this is just a point in case, this is not related to fluoride, this is just related to, we have to find a better way to engage the public, how they want to engage, where they want to engage, and when they want to engage. And we whiffed on this one, because seven people is a whiff. And then, I think that that's kind of it. It's just really, before we can move this forward, this goes back to my earlier question about timeline, we really need to have some data that speaks to the comments we've heard this evening and the underlying debate, which isn't about, is it 4 cents a month, or is it $3.70 a month? It is a question of, are there health benefits and are there... It is a question of are the health, are there health benefits and are there health concerns associated with fluoride in the water?
So, let's ask deputy council president Peace.
So, I just would like to echo, when we're looking at the questions, echo what a little bit of what councilmember Ray just talked about. I too see this. It's very difficult to separate this into a process question, having to do with the water plant without having that discussion around the health concerns and also without more public engagement. So, I don't feel that the public engagement has been adequate, and I feel like we have need to have further discussion and more of a presentation that is giving us, I believe, both sides and a better understanding of the public health issue.
Councilmember Hunt.
So, firstly, I think that having more public engagement is a good thing, and I think having more science, bringing more science to the table is also a good thing, bringing more information. For me, for my review, I'll start big picture and then go to personal, but for me, and the last question, does council have feedback or direction? My feedback is that I think it is, the science is clear. So, a number of different United States agencies were mentioned in the comments. They, so I'm going to start by reading some of the statements. So, CDC, Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, they have a page, Community Water Fluoridation. They start out with, "Many research studies have proven the safety and benefits of fluoride. For 70 years, people in the United States have benefited from drinking water with fluoride, leading to better dental health. Drinking fluoridated water keeps teeth strong and reduces cavities, also called tooth decay, by about 25% in childrens and adults. By preventing cavities, community water fluoridation has been shown to save money for families and for U.S. healthcare system." And they go on. So, that's at the CDC's page. Then, some other organizations were also mentioned in the public comments. The U.S. Department of Health and Human Services has said that the optimal fluoride level in drinking water to prevent tooth decay should be 0.7 milligrams of fluoride per liter of water, and this is the amount that we're recommending. So, I think we're in line with that agency as well. And then the EPA does have a benchmark for a different standard, which is set as the upper level, and that is at four milligrams. So, that is to prevent any risks from exposure of too much fluoride because that's what that agency does, and ours is well below that level as well. So, we also have information from the American Dental Association. We've also heard from other dental, other dentists, other dental agencies that are in support. And this echoes many of the same things from the EPA, but basically saying that this provides a huge public health benefit and a huge, huge benefit for kids. So, personally, I have two small kids. I've currently, I drink tap water. I've drunk tap water all over the city, and fluoridated, non-fluoridated. Never, never had any concern about that. I also have no concern about my kids drinking fluoridated water. And in fact, I've asked our dentists, is it okay if they're, because I was living on Squawk Mountain when they were growing up, and I asked, is it okay that they're not drinking fluoridated water? And the response that I received from my dentist is that they are receiving, if they're going to restaurants in the Highlands, et cetera, then they're getting some fluoride that way. So, at least there's that. So, I think it would provide a huge public benefit. I think the science is clear, and my, my personal feedback is that I think this is in line with a lot of good science, and I am all for bringing more science to show because a lot of this is research that I'm, I'm talking about, although we have also received a lot of emails from dentists and from authorities, public health authorities. But I'm all for bringing more science, but for me, it's clear that it has public health benefits.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thanks. The, I don't see the problem as being fluoride. The problem that we're trying to solve doesn't have anything to do with fluoride. If it had to do with fluoride, we would have been having this conversation, you know, at every council meeting for the last however many years since we've had fluoride in some of the water supplies in Issaquah. So, I don't, I think if we get into a public health discussion or a discussion about concerns, then we're getting into discussions and debates that what we call battles of the experts. It's kind of similar to the conversation and the debates we had about the plastic bags. You're going to have people who agree and people who disagree. But I don't think that, the issue is not about fluoride, and we're not trying to solve a problem about fluoride. We're trying to solve a problem that has to do with water supplies that are adequate for the future, which is what city administrator Snyder was talking about. That's, that's, that's why we're talking about this water treatment plant. So, I don't see how talking about public health or more science is going to do anything but convolute everything. I am much more interested in some of the comments that we heard about how we preserve flexibility and what that might do to the cost of a water treatment plant. That's what I'm interested in. I will echo the comments of my fellow council members and some of the public about the meeting that attracted seven people and a little bit stunned that we could talk about that as being a, a good outcome. So, for a few years now, we have been, when we talk about public engagement, we are getting, we've reached 5,000 people here and 3,000 people there. And I'll say what I said a couple of weeks ago at our meeting. I don't know what that means. What does that mean? Does that mean that it hits Facebook pages? That doesn't mean anything. But I can tell you with a topic that is usually as hot as this is when you talk about fluoride and people who have children typically are listening, when you're talking about fluoride and you're talking about fluoridating a water supply that's not been fluoridated in the past, you're going to get interest. So, for whatever reason, we're not reaching people. It's either in the middle of summer, or it's at five o'clock, or we're not doing our outreach well enough. I too am one of those people who got the email about it not too long before the meeting happened, and as a council member, I had no idea that there was a meeting. So, I'm not surprised that in the middle of the summer, you're not going to get very many people. Seven people is an indication to me that, like Chris said, it's a whiff. So, we need more public engagement, and I don't want to hear how many thousands of people we reached. I want to hear how many people came to the meeting. And I also agree with the comment that it was a little bit difficult to figure out what it is we're trying to, we're not making a decision, but kind of specifically what, what we're trying to do here. It's, it's, it's a little awkward. We've got fluoride first, and then we've got a water treatment plant discussion second, and public engagement that didn't go very well. So, that's my feedback.
Thank you. So, does council need more information? I need more information. Statement was made, we're not focusing on debating any health elements or aspects of fluoridation. We have to. This has potential public health implications. I have to say that the last time this city discussed fluoridation was right after I moved here, and at the time, I really thought it was a sort of anti-science or pseudoscience kind of thing, the teach the debate, which the anti-vaxers and the creationists use to sort of obfuscate the fact that the scientific consensus has, as long ago, been reached on those subjects. But I have to say, information that, you know, citizen feedback on this issue caused me to go back and look at it, and I just have to quote three paragraphs from the National Toxicology Program of the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. "In 2016, NTP completed a systematic review of the published animal literature looking at neurobehavioral effects of exposure to fluoride during development and adulthood in rats and mice. The assessment found a low to moderate level of evidence that support adverse effects on learning and memory in animals exposed to fluoride in the diet or drinking water. The evidence was strongest in animals exposed as adults and weaker in animals exposed during development. The animal study typically evaluated development exposure at fluoride levels higher than 0.7 parts per million, the recommended level for community water fluoridation in the United States. Additional research is underway," and by the way, this paper was written on, or this statement from HHS was written on June 27, 2019. "Additional research is underway to attempt to replicate these findings at water concentrations closer to the levels used in community water fluoridation. NTP is currently conducting a systematic review to evaluate potential neurobehavioral effects from exposure to fluoride during development that include consideration of human epidemiology, additional experimental animal studies, and mechanistic data." So, I need to understand, this is fairly recent, this is 2016. I need to understand this statement from my government before I know whether I can support what we do going forward with fluoride. So, to councilmember Ray's earlier comments, you know, I need to, I have to go to the science. And again, I understand this debate among the experts that councilmember Goodman mentioned. You know, you can have one group, have a group of experts, and then somebody else has a different group of experts, but I can't, I'm not ready to make a decision without understanding sort of this, this aspect that's right there front and center from my federal government, right? Public engagement, you know, some issues people just aren't that excited about, but I, fluoride has never been one of those issues. When we had a paper, people loved to write about fluoride. I think they're out there, and I think for whatever reason, we didn't, I, it hasn't reflected the interest that the community has on this subject. We owe it to folks to have a more ironclad conversation about the public health side of things before we move forward one way or the other. So, my feedback would be that before council makes a decision, we have more clarity on these issues. It may well be that, you know, there's a biochemist at the University of Washington that, or the state, somebody or the other, who can help provide clarity on this. I appreciate, I want to say this gently because I love my dentist, but you know, if you have been, if you are a professional and you do things a certain way, and there's, you know, some evidence that supports what you do being the right way to do it, then you're going to want to, you're going to want to believe that that's the right way to do it. And so, I, while I, whilst dentists certainly see a lot of patients, I'm looking more for scientists or public policy folks from the, from King County or the state that can give some clarity around these, what I consider to be emerging issues around fluoride and the research represented by HHS. Councilmember Hunt.
Thanks. I think the statement was made in the public comment also that the University of Washington deans of public health had made a statement in support, all of the deans or numerous deans. So, there's, there are also maybe local public health experts that could come. I, like I said, I'm not opposed to that. I am, however, strongly, I think, opposed or very concerned about the debate aspect because I don't see that that, I don't see that that will just clarify things. I think it could just be, so I just really, really would not want this to become a debate because I can, I have studies that, you know, talk about long cohort studies that talk about not showing neurotoxicity effects. So, like, right, right now, we could have that debate, but I don't think that that is the way we want to go. I think having an expert would be fine. We don't have a public health expert that is giving a presentation this evening, so I think that that would be fine and potentially helpful, but I also am very concerned about a debate.
All right. Anyone else? Oh, councilmember Goodman.
Yep. I, I guess I'm concerned too about the, I mean, we have, what percentage did you say it? Our city receives fluoridated water and has for a very long time.
About two-thirds.
Right. I'm very concerned about the message that we send to the community that is receiving fluoridated water in their tap, that all of a sudden, this is a health concern. And that if it was a health concern, why hasn't been, why hasn't it been brought up before now? So, that's my concern about, about all of a sudden this being an issue, you know, looking to solve a problem that wasn't a problem.
Well, I think the administration has probably gotten the feedback that it was looking for from council. You know, I'll just add, you know, scientific consensus changes, right? And we just need to understand if in fact, there is a change. I remember when I was growing up, that polyunsaturated fats, everybody thought was a great thing, a great way to help lose weight. Now, polyunsaturated fats are considered not a good thing to put in your diet. So, I just, I want to understand, you know, this isn't some, you know, this isn't some book available on the internet. This is the National Toxicology Program of the U.S. Health and Human Services Department. So, anyhow, does that have a feedback interim city administrator that you were looking for?
Yes. Excuse me. Yes, I believe we do. Thank you.
All right. Let us move on. We will now, sorry, lost my place in my book. We will move to ID 0475 Water Treatment Plant. Robert York, Jeff Hanson, and Pierre Kwan, the last two are consultants. Yeah.
This time, I'm just pleased to announce my consultant team in the interest of time. This is about long-term water treatment. You might hear the fluoride word again during this conversation, but it's about a whole bunch of other things too. So, with that, I'll introduce Pierre Kwan from HDR and Jeff Hanson from HDR. Both, both have been involved for many years here in the city, doing our various municipal water work and including the PFAS stuff, so. Pierre's first.
Thank you, Bob. Good evening, councilmembers. So, the purpose of this presentation is really two items, giving a current understanding of where the city is at with the conceptual design of the water treatment plant. And then from there, really is establishing a relative size or footprint of the facility that is then leading into the siting of this facility here within the city, the approach and the status. I will be covering the first bullet, conceptual design, and my coworker, Jeff, will be discussing the facility siting. Just to give a reiteration of the issues the city has with its ground, with its multiple water supplies. Risen Wells number one and two have a low pH. It's corrosive to indoor plumbing of all materials. Gilman Well number four, it also has a low pH, therefore it is corrosive to indoor plumbing. This is also the one that has the perfluorinated alkalous substances, PFAS, one of which is PFAS. That's, I think, the, the name you most closely associate here at the city. It also has manganese. Manganese is, turns the water black. And then right next to Gilman Well number four is number, well number five. It also has a risk for PFAS. It also has manganese. Two other items that this well has, and it's a key well to the city's water supply, it also has arsenic, naturally occurring arsenic, as well as it has a nitrogen issue that affects the proper disinfection of this water. And we've spent the last hour discussing regional water supply and the fluoride that it has. So, what have we been tackling so far in advancing this project? Really, it's defining what are the required water treatment processes to address each of these issues, establishing a generic treatment plant building and site footprint such that then would be given to the facility siting team to identify the location within the city. As part of the treatment process, we did do a test for manganese and arsenic removal. This was a very successful test that was conducted last month in which, the photo below here is the pilot trailer where the testing was done, and this is at Gilman Well number, the Gilman Wells, four and five. And we were able to successfully remove the manganese and arsenic from the well water, and that information allowed us to develop the size requirements and the cost for this Using that information, as well as other information that we've gathered from literature, my personal experience in doing this for 20 years, as well as my coworker... my personal experience in doing this for 20 years, as well as my coworkers throughout HDR around the country, we've identified the, several processes to address each of the water quality issues. The low pH, that's a simple process of we're just gonna mix air into the water, that'll adjust, adjust the low pH. The PFAS compounds would be adjusted with activated carbon. This is the same process that's currently being used at well number four. The manganese and arsenic, this is green sand filtration processes. This is the test that was just done last month. And then we have fluoride. This was again, just discussed. If we do add fluoride, it's adding a sodium fluoride salt to the, to the water. This is the same salt that's currently used at Talus and Highlands. And then if we do want to go the opposite way, which is removal, then the removal process is adding new types of filters into the facility to remove that compound. And then all the treated water would be disinfected with sodium hyperchloride bleach. And so, what we've done is taken all these, we've taken the issues, come up with the initial resolution of how to treat the issue, and use that information to start preparing a conceptual diagram or process, in engineering speak, a process flow diagram to show how all the waters come together. You see in the upper left, Gilman Wells four and five have come together. They'll be treated with the green sand filtration technology that was tested, successfully tested last month to remove the arsenic and manganese. Then we run through granular activated carbon to remove the PFOS compounds. Then we combine those with Gilman's, I'm sorry, Rizden Wells one and two, blend all the waters together. We'll add the air to adjust the low pH. We'll add the chlorine, and in this diagram, then we add the fluoride salt to induce a, to provide the fluoride in the water. And then at the bottom, again, this is just a schematic. We'll match the water quality with that of the Cascade Water Alliance, the regional water, and then this will go out through distribution, okay? Shows it as just one point into distribution, it's actually multiple locations. Again, this is a schematic for discussion purposes today. As we put the schematic together and we put the technologies, this is where we started putting in an example, building footprint and then a siting. To be clear, you know, this little diagram here that we worked up does not include the defluoridation process. We're looking at a building footprint about 24,000 square feet, and then an overall site about, of about 1.9 acres. This is right now, the, I want to really stress, this is our generic building and site footprint. It is subject to additional analysis once we get from a blank sheet of paper to an actual parcel location for which then we'll, you know, adjust the access roads and, and fit with city requirements for setbacks and other building department requirements. With that, I will turn it over to Jeff to discuss facility siting.
Before, before you move on.
Yes.
I had a, I had a couple of questions. Did we know, can you go back to show the wells and the issues of the wells?
Whoops.
Keep going, keep going. Did we know that well number five had PFOS?
The original contamination was around well number four.
Uh-huh.
There has been traces now found leaking from well number four to well number five. The amounts are very low.
Does council know that?
I actually believe the traces in well five was also discussed when we were discussing well four treatment.
One of the reasons why I ask is the city's website says, in regards to well four, has the city tested its other wells? Yes, all of his wells have tested below EPA's detection threshold for CFCs. That's on the website right now.
EPA's detection level, I believe, is a little bit higher than the threshold of the actual GC stuff, I think. I'd have to take a look, but I know.
That is threading that needle exceedingly fine.
Yeah. We'll have to make sure that verbiage is changed.
Okay.
Good point.
Okay, then I had, okay, then I had another question for you, which is, you got a 24,000 square foot facility on 1. some odd acres. Why do we need such a large patch for a 24,000 square foot facility?
And you're, you're talking about this diagram here.
Yes.
That is a good point, and this is where I do want to stress, we are subject to additional analysis. What you see, the box in the middle is the building, and what we have provided is, right now, an idealized park, can I point to the screen? I've got, I'm gonna get away from the microphone. Oh, thank you. What we have here is an access all the way around with truck traffic for the delivery of materials and chemicals. We can definitely revise that as, we also have parking for in staff, as well as parking for visitors or public tours of events. We provided space, there it is, we provided space, this area in here is for, currently an optimized area for future maintenance and expansion, and an area here for additional treatment processes for disinfection, not, not for fluoridation, but for disinfection. And then, and this is partly me, this area right here set aside is for stormwater treatment and mitigation. We also have quite a bit of, we set from beyond this exterior line, this is the paved area, then we also applied five feet of setback from other parcels. Again, the, as we advance forward, as we start talking with building department as well staff, these, this footprint can be revised. I, I think the, the goal here was not, at this point, get a site that is too small or is just large enough for exactly the water quality requirements as stated by the DUH as of exactly today, and then get us hemmed into a point where we cannot adjust treatment or expand in the future to meet different regulations or council directions.
All right, thank you. Other questions?
Okay. Councilmember Hunt. Thank you. I, I have a question about the, the blending of water and making sure it's the same everywhere. So, it was brought up earlier that we do have a lot of dead ends in the city, and also the observation that Connie made about smelling chlorine in the water. I've also observed that where I am, so it's different on different days, and it's observably so. So I'm wondering if this, what the effect of this is in terms of the consistency, is the word I was looking for, the consistency of water throughout the system. So would this help to not have days where the water smells like chlorine, for example?
Yeah, I'm gonna, if I may, go back to this diagram. What you, what the city currently has is everything here on the left. We have the Gilman Wells four and five, Rizden's Wells one and two, and the Cascade Water Alliance, regional water supply. What occurs is there are five different points of, essentially five different points of entry into the city's water system. And depending on how the wells are used, you may get different blends of water coming through. What the point of centralized treatment is, is by this location after, as this diagram shows, after fluoridation, instead of having just five waters, different entries into the system, you have two. And so we're mitigating for the variability of these, the, all these wells, and having a more blended, more uniform supply into the city.
Okay, so, so it would be intended to be uniform throughout the city as well as these dead ends where currently there are certain other things observed at different times.
I'm gonna straight set that this is for the treatment going into distribution. This project may help with dead end mains, but I mean, that isn't, it may provide a more uniform water to, going into the system. The dead ends represent the furthest extremes of the piping network within the city. This project doesn't necessarily deal with that.
Okay.
It'll improve the situation, but it doesn't directly deal with that.
Councilmember Walsh.
So, to echo and kind of go in a little bit further to what Council President Smarts was talking about, if we're looking at a building footprint that is about 24,000 square feet, I'd like to understand a little bit more why we're suggesting that we would need 1.9 acres versus, you know, 24,000 square feet is basically half an acre. So, when we come back to this, and I think I'm mostly suggesting to city administration that that's a question I want to understand a little bit more about, but for you, the 24,000 square feet, does that represent, it looks like, the possibility of needing to grow for any other changes in science or capacity needs or anything like that? Or are you using the rest of the site footprint to represent any potential growth?
We, at this point, we're including space for future regulations, future additional requirements. So there's a space, this is sized to.
Within the building or within the site footprint?
Well, right now, it's within the building.
Okay.
But we can, there are, there are many installations where we start off with the building, and then regulations go much quicker than was projected, and they wind up taking out parking spots or paved areas to expand the building as well.
Do we have any sense of how much extra footprint we need for that concept?
The, the rule of thumb is generally 20 to 25% right now. It's really hard to project in a crystal ball what the EPA or, you know, like, like the city has experienced PFAS, that was a completely unknown concept five years ago. Now it's the most, it's a hot button issue. It's very difficult to project, so the rule of thumb I've used, my company's used, others within the industry used, add 25%. You know, just, there's no, it's just a history of engineering of how to do this. It gives you several iterations before you have run out of space.
So, when we look at this in the future, I want to understand what that 20, 25% represents, how much we need for circulation and parking, and then what we might be able to eliminate so that we don't have to buy 1.9 acres.
Yes.
Any other questions? None right now.
So yeah, just to add on to that, as we move on, I think the bottom line point is it's layers of conservatism that have gone into that 1.9, and it's acknowledged that that could potentially, if anything, be trimmed back, but we didn't want to be in a position where we would have to be adding to area. So, what's the importance of that for where we are right now? Well, it's, it's about trying to find an appropriate piece of property upon which the centralized treatment facility could be located. So the approach that we're taking on that, first step is to identify potential areas within the city that are suitable from, let's say, an engineering perspective. What makes sense, what's logical in terms of plugging this new treatment facility and integrating it into the existing water infrastructure? So we've been, we've gone through that process, and we've identified some areas, and now then the question is evaluating and prioritizing areas based on a variety of criteria, including zoning, current land use, environmental permitting considerations, proximity to other utility infrastructure, sewer and storm, site access, transportation considerations, things like that. We're in the midst of that right now. The idea is to come out of that process with a preferred identified area, and to then discuss with council within that area which property or properties should be considered for potential site acquisition. So that's the overall process or approach. For a little more detail, this, very broadly speaking, is the, the general area within which we are looking, okay? And what's really driving this is proximity to existing infrastructure and key tie-in points. So what you see on the map, to the north here, this is the location of the Gilman Wells, and then go down Gilman Boulevard, here's the location of the Rizden Wells. This blue or purple line that's cutting through, that's the Cascade Water Alliance Regional Pipeline, large diameter regional pipeline. And so, when we design the centralized treatment facility and it gets plugged into the system, new infrastructure will be required to connect the existing wells to that treatment facility. And so we're looking for what's an optimal location relative to trying to minimize that, that new and additional infrastructure. The other key engineering consideration is, I'm not showing it here, but as you can imagine, the water distribution piping throughout here is like a grid, right? It's a network of various sizes of piping. One of the considerations is, right now, as Pierre mentioned, you have water that's coming into that grid from here, the Gilman Wells, and down here at Rizden. If we are bringing water from both of those locations to a centralized spot, now we have a larger volume of water coming into the system at one point. So we evaluate the ability of different points of the distribution system to accommodate that, that additional water flow. So within this generalized area of the city, we've identified 10 specific sub-areas, and we've, we are now currently taking those through the evaluation process. Couple key steps here. One, we've identified, four of those areas have some pretty significant challenges. Doesn't mean that it's not possible to locate a treatment facility there, but it's really significant environmental and land use considerations. So the next step, and we have a meeting set up within the next three weeks with department heads from across the city, Development Services, Economic Development, and Parks and Recreation, to update them on where Public Works is at with evaluating and screening these sub-areas. And through that process, we will weed out those that we collectively deem too challenging to pursue. Those that remain will prioritize and then come back to council in more detail. We didn't want to get into the weeds on that tonight because we have not yet had that discussion with other staff within the city, so we want to have that. The idea here is that by the end of the year, we've, we've got not only an area, but then we've had discussions with council about the actual parcels, the properties within that area, with the goal of identifying a select parcel or parcels by the end of the year to then proceed with property acquisition next year.
Councilmember Ray.
So if we, if we went with a defluoridating option, how much impact would that have on the size of the facility, and what would that do to our remaining six potential sites?
So our estimate right now to add in defluoridation would increase building size approximately 15%, somewhere between the 10 and 20% range. And so that would be that much more additional land with respect to cost. What would the implication be on those, those sub-areas? Right now, I believe all those sub-areas would essentially still be in play, but would be more constrained in some of them. We'll be having those discussions, again, with the various departments here in a couple weeks.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions right now?
Okay, that's, that's really it. That was just kind of a status update to let you all know where we are at in the overall process.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you. Oh, Councilmember Hunt.
I just wondered if there's anything that can be done about the consistency of water at the dead ends, because I think it is a real issue.
Yeah, as Pierre, I'll, I'll speak briefly to that. As Pierre mentioned, this may be partially addressed through this effort in terms of making consistent the water that's entering the distribution system, but a lot of the issues with the dead end mains are a function of flow through or lack thereof throughout the distribution system, and that takes additional types of upgrades, not at the location of the centralized treatment plant. And I can tell you, through the water system planning process, we look at that primarily from the perspective of fire flow, the ability to move water throughout the grid, and improvements are identified in the water system plan and the city budgets for that, to address fire flow, and where possible, also water quality issues. You want to speak more to that?
I'll speak a little bit more on that. So water quality at the dead end mains is also a function of how much time the operations department has to go out and flush these mains, because as Jeff mentioned. Because as Jeff mentioned, it's a flow issue. The water gets a little bit more stale because there's less use at the end of these dead ends. And so they have a periodic, regular flushing schedule that they do throughout the whole city to help address water quality in these dead-end mains. And if you want more consistent water quality and things like that, that means they're going to have to increase the amount of flushing activities that they do, which means increase resources and things like that. Right now, they're doing it and they're maintaining water quality in accordance with the regulations.
Okay. And I'm not sure if I'm using dead-end mains correctly, but I just know that there are a lot of properties, including mine, that had that issue. And I never thought of us being on the end of a main or anything, but it's definitely a problem that a lot of people have.
No, that's true. And we, we smell it also at City Hall Northwest.
All right.
Any other questions? So, thank you very much. Appreciate it. I am going to, we're two hours and 20 minutes in at this point, I am actually going to go, have us take a five-minute bio break and we will return. It is 8:48. Let's plan on being back at 8:53 for our last item, which is ID 0522 Puget Sound Regional Council Vision 2050. Let's do audience comments after we come back from the break. And we are back. So with that, we are going to take a follow-up. Oh, I'm sorry, my mic was not on. There we go. Let's try that again. We are back. And with that, I'm going to ask, in regards to ID 0475 Water Treatment Plan, if there's any public comment, and I see a member of the public chomping at the bit.
Chomping, thirsting, thirsting.
Thirsting at the bit.
Thirsting. So, one, we should have been buying this land when we did the Central Issaquah Plan and we neglected to fund our infrastructure requirements during the Central Issaquah Plan formation. And I don't know how, as we grow, we can not ever, ever, ever do that again. We need a system that doesn't allow that to happen. Two, the PFAS, as it, they clean, actually puts its water into tributary of Issaquah Creek. But nobody thought about it and it didn't go through any particular process. So it goes into this tributary that is connected during flood time and there's nothing I can do about it. I found it in retrospect and there's nothing I can do. So when you look at this plant, I want to understand how you clean it, where that water goes, and then how we are taking all of this water that we are using and infiltrating our aquifer to and not just shoving it either into a creek or somewhere else. Now, you have some issues. We're on the valley floor. The valley floor has high groundwater, yet we just keep shoving our valley floor water elsewhere, yet we're trying to pump our valley floor water so that we can drink it in perpetuity, right? So we're starting this ungainly system of water use that no one is examining. And I think we need to examine that because water is going to be an issue in the future. What is our aquifer health during all times of year? Is it fluctuating more? And we need to have consistent monitoring of that situation, which we currently do not do. It is connected with the creeks and our wetlands also. So in the placement of all of this on the valley floor, which is mainly immersed in water throughout the entirety of the year, you, you sort of, I'm perplexed by how this is going to be successful in the piping and movement of all of the water. So I would ask for arrows showing where the water goes now and how you are going to get the water over what streets, to what impact to the community as you start creating this system. Because the community is paying for it and then they're going to pay for it again as it's being created if the way the water system, in my mind, works, is going to be replaced by, by what they're thinking of doing. That may have made no sense to you all, but I'm supposed to talk to you instead of them, right? So I am. I think the people who live on the valley floor and up on the hills need to understand the flow and how it is going to be successful because it's dang expensive. And the rate study frankly needs to be a part of this whole conversation before a decision is made. My understanding is the rate study is not until September or some point in time. So I would ask for a delay so that you are looking at all the information and you are not getting it piecemeal and saying, wow, if we had known that, we might have made a different decision. So there's always more, but I'm going to stop at that point. Thank you.
Thanks. And there's no other members of the public at this point, so we'll move on. And I wanted to offer interim city administrator Snyder a chance to revisit the conversation we had earlier in regards to fluoridation.
Thank you, Council President Smarts. During the break, there was a discussion among staff, making sure we had clarity following the fluoridation discussion. And it seems that there was a little bit of confusion. So I was hoping to take this opportunity to, to reflect back what, what we heard and make sure that that strikes the right tenor of the conversation and the feedback that you provided during the discussion. So when talking about next steps, what I heard is that we need to provide more community outreach about the fluoride topic. That was clear. And that we need to bring back a public health expert to speak to the science before council. I would propose in a work session. I know that there was not 100% unanimity on that topic, but I'm looking at, I'm looking at council to tell me that that's what I heard and so that we know what to expect and that we can be meeting your expectations.
Comment. Councilmember Ray.
I would like at least some discussion about the current state of fluoride from a hub public health, both pros and cons session.
So I'll say, I, I do agree with the idea that I don't want to just have a debate, right? I don't want to just say, please bring me somebody who's in favor and somebody who's against. What I am looking for, there is, I mean, again, I, you know, I'm just pointing out HHS, you know, or not HHS, DDS, I'm, I'm, sorry, H, yeah, HHS. I'm looking for somebody who can speak to the current, these current issues that have emerged in the last three years and just put it in context and help us understand the overall state of where things are at from a public health policy standpoint, whether it's King County or the state or whatever. But I'm not looking for a big debate. I'm looking for somebody who can talk, including this, you know, this, the research within the last couple of years. This argument of, well, it's been safe for 70 years. That's not what I'm looking for, right? I'm looking for somebody who can, who can talk about current, the state of things currently. But I, but I do agree with the folks who say, this is, let's not do a debate because you can find on the, you know, everybody can find on the internet things that make anything look bad. And I mentioned vaccinations before. I mean, I was, I believe that vaccinations have saved more lives than any other piece of technology that's come out in the last 100 years. And so people make hay with the ability to pick at little edges of that to argue that it's bad public policy. So I'm, I'm looking for somebody who sees the big picture and can talk to us about this subject. Councilmember Hunt.
So I, I do think that community engagement, public engagement and explaining what we're talking about is important, but I also think we have, I think we have opportunity to talk about the bigger picture too, about the water system, about the water treatment plant, why we're doing that, that we also use cascade water, that it's regional water. So my, my thinking on the community engagement is that it, it is, fluoride is part of what we're talking about, but we're also talking about it in a bigger context about water quality and water treatment and the future of water in the city. So that would be my preference for the community engagement. And I think it would give people a better sense of why. There was some public comment about, it was a little confusing, the point of the public engagement, and it's in this bigger context of the water treatment plant that we're considering. So for me, it makes sense to give it that context and also then we have an opportunity to get more public engagement on that topic and also to make sure people are aware about the context. And then as far as the expert, we do often have experts come and present information to us on different topics. So from that perspective, I think it is appropriate, but I'm also super concerned about it becoming a debate. As has been mentioned, there are many families, many parents of kids, women that are pregnant, et cetera, that are in fluoridated areas of our city and it's not a public health concern. And I just would hate that we have a debate that would give anybody any sense of concern because it's, it's not that. So, so I have, I have that concern that it becomes a debate, but I also think having an expert is appropriate and it seems like something that's our practice.
Council Deputy President Patisse.
So when we talk about the, the public health, I think that the way that I would describe, what I would be hoping for is just an overview, update, status from an expert, as we've talked about, and I would not be looking for a debate on both sides of, of the issue. Just a, we're, this is coming forward. This does wrap into the elements of the water treatment plant, and so having more of a holistic view for public engagement about all the things that we're talking about right now and then an update from an expert on fluoridation, I think, would be really useful.
Councilmember Goodman.
Yeah, I think Councilmember Hunt described it very well. I think taking it up a little higher and talking about the context and why we're doing this, why we're having the conversation and not just come tell us what you think about, you know, adding fluoride to the other parts of the city system is really important. I, I am really failing to see the value of bringing in an expert to talk about the state of something that is clearly a, a divided topic. But if that's what, you know, I want to hear, that's fine. I just think it's a, a kind of an illusory exercise myself, but anyway.
Any other comment? Oh, all right. Is that, does that help give you clarity?
It, it does, thank you. So what I'm hearing from council, I'm hearing expressed that we should bring back one expert who can portray recent science and discuss the scientific evidence to date and reflect that or, or present on that to council. I am hearing the outreach to the public should be considerate of the water system as a whole and to be more educational to the public of that, make sure they understand our water system. And that's what I'm hearing. So just want to check that back with council. Okay. Thank you very much.
Head nods around the room.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Well, then with that, we will move on to Trish Hanenin.
Yes.
And we will be talking about, oh man, I keep closing out this window, but it's, oh, ah, sorry.
Vision 2050.
Yes, Vision 2050.
With whatever the ID number is.
Whatever, yes, right.
And the purpose of tonight is to give you a brief presentation on the newest draft 2050 and to see what comments you would like to share with PSRC, if you would like to share any at all. And the deadline for that is September 16th. And so, so I'm here tonight to, to run through the highlights of Vision 2050. It's an update, obviously, from Vision 2040. And in April, we had Erica Harris come out from PSRC to share the three- And in April, we had Erica Harris come out from PSRC to share the three alternatives and the environmental impact that they had done on Vision 2050. She told us that the long-range forecast for population is 5.8 million we'll have in 2050. We'll have 3.4 million jobs between 2017 and 2050. Our residents will be older, will be more diverse as communities, and will be living in smaller households. That was true with all of the alternatives, but just to remind you, the three alternatives that she presented were stay the course, which focused the growth in metropolitans and core cities, of which Issaquah is a core city. The second alternative was transit-focused growth, which put even more growth in those areas in metropolitan and core cities and in those areas that had high-capacity transit. And the third alternative was reset urban growth, which put more in distributed growth outside in the urban growth area, not in the cities. There was a percentage that went out and you all did not like that third alternative. You all wrote a letter, well, the mayor wrote a letter, you all gave directions of the letter, the comments that should be written and they, and you came, you liked the alternative that they came out with. They came out with the second alternative with some tweaks to it. And it includes the regional growth strategy that talks about all the different areas, the targets, how they'll, how will grow, how the transportation will be linked in. And so the, the regional growth strategy is within Vision 2050. The specific alternative that they picked is transit-focused growth. The little tweak, I think that Councilmember Paul was talking about at your last meeting, and sadly, he's not here because he's been through all the meetings, is instead of just saying 75% of all the population and jobs will be in growth centers and within walking distance, they separated the targets out a little bit and said 65 population growth and 75% employment growth. So they actually separated it out a little bit in the final, in this final version. But everything else was pretty much the same as it was for the alternative that she presented. And knowing that that was the preferred alternative, at least for you all, that you seemed to lean that way, staff showed you this in April. It's this, it's odd on my screen, but this is showing that the Central Issaquah Plan and Lakeside over here actually does fit this alternative and we would be able to accommodate the growth projected in Vision 2050 using the growth that we already have in the, not in the pipeline, but that's already accommodated through Lakeside and Central Issaquah. So I wanted to remind you of that, that we'd already gone through the numbers on that one. The plan as it came out, this is a visual that helped me understand how much is actually in Vision 2050. It also has the multi-county planning policies that have two different, sort of, they have policies, but they have two different kinds of actions. The regional actions are those that PSRC is responsible for with help from local jurisdictions. And local actions are those that local, that we're responsible for with the help of PSRC. And it's, it's a subtle difference, but the local actions are the ones that made, you know, my ears stand up and go, oh, those are the ones that we're on the hook for. So those are the ones that I shared with you in the memo. And the good news is we're able to address all of them, which made me feel good because sometimes regional plans can be so diverse that you don't, you're not able to hit all of the pieces you need to hit. And so Issaquah's in a very good position because we've already aligned ourselves that we're in good shape on many of them, all of them. This is just the summary. There's eight of them, eight chapters that have local actions. And I can go through them one at a time if you want. I made separate slides if you wanted to talk about them, but I can go through super fast and efficiently if you like. I can't tell if I'm getting nodding heads, so I'm just going to keep going.
Yes, please continue.
Okay. The first chapter is on regional collaboration and there's two local actions that we would be responsible for with the help of PSRC. The first one is funding sources, working closely to find funding sources and working closely to be sure that the funding sources are allocated to the areas that have regional growth centers and transit coming. And the second part of the local action is to communicate to the state, to make sure the state is allowing funding to come to the places that need it, the places that have, are trying to accommodate it, to make sure that we get infrastructure and service funding. Second chapter is regional growth strategy. This is the tricky one, I think, because it talks about, it alludes to the countywide, the King County countywide policies that sets growth targets. And we, a lot of the letter that we sent to PSRC talked about, why aren't the growth targets and job targets actually connected and linked to the infrastructure funding? Because we could be going great guns and providing jobs and housing, but if PSRC and the state aren't coming in with infrastructure funding, then we've done our bit, but we aren't getting any help with providing services and infrastructure. PSRC said that was a really good point, so go Issaquah. And they said that we should make that really clear when we're negotiating with King County on the growth targets, that, that there's a very strong link in how we're meeting the job and growth targets and how the funding is coming through. So I wanted to make that clear, that they thought that was a super good comment and they wanted us to be sure to bring that up when, when we're starting to negotiate next year. Next one is environment. And the good news with this one is it's local open space planning. And as you know, we just did the park strategic plan and parks department said they totally were okay and consistent with the regional open space conservation plan that was adopted by PSRC in 2018. So we've already met the criteria for this one. Climate change, emission reduction is a local action. We currently have emission-reducing policies in the comp plan. We're doing the, the mobility master plan now that will have multimodal options and choices. And so I think we're doing really well on this one. Once the mobility master plan comes out, we'll see how close we are on, to fit this one as well. But I think we're in good shape with emission reduction. The next one is development patterns, and there are a few of those. The first one is identification and cleanup of underused lands. As far as I know, back years ago, with land and shore, you had asked us to do, the administration to do inventory, a land inventory of city land, an underused land. As I recall, we didn't have any surplus at the time, but I would bet that we're probably going to do another land inventory in the near future. The second one is the central plants and station area plans. And as you know, we already have the Central Issaquah Plan and we're already a regional growth center. So that happened in 2015, so we're already okay on that one. This one also, yes.
Sorry, Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. So I just wanted to go back to the cleanup of underused lands because you talked about doing the inventory of public lands, but I wondered about the cleanup because it also is talking about cleaning up contaminated sites. So does Issaquah have a response on, on that one, that part?
I think, as far as I know, we're in the process of that.
Process of making a response?
Oh, no, of the, the only contaminated land that, that we're aware of, that I'm aware of is the, is the, the Brown Bear site is getting cleaned up and anything that happens from the fire station, we're in the process of figuring that out.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, it just seems like an incomplete response to that one.
You're right. You're right, it is, because I didn't identify. I think I ran out of room on my slide, but good point. I'll make a note of that.
Councilmember Walsh.
So it also says on there about station areas. So do we have a way to respond considering we don't know where a light rail station would exist?
Right, right. And we will be addressing that through the strategic plan. I think that's one of the outer-year ones in the strategic plan, but the Central Issaquah Plan has sort of a bubble where we say that it will happen. We call it the slug map because it kind of looks like a slug. But, so we, we sort of addressed it in there so that the region would know that we're serious about getting light rail and high-capacity rail. So we wanted to be sure there was a map in there to show potential stations. But I'm sure the closer we get to it, we'll actually start having, figuring out how to actually have a transit, a station plan.
So we feel like that addresses the needed local action?
Right, right. And the wording in orange is only my commenting on, this hasn't gone to PSRC as a, as a response. This is only my response to you all, that, that we're in good shape on them. It's not the official, the official response. Is there another question that I missed?
Not at this moment.
Okay, fair enough. Housing needs, we're also in, in good shape, at least with the policy piece of the housing needs through the housing strategy plan and working on those strategies. We've done, I think, more than half of them to date. We still have several more to go. The affordable housing incentives, that's the second local action. We are working still with Arch and we do all the techniques that we can do so far. And so we're still, that's still an ongoing one, but we've, we're doing everything that we can at this point. Oh, I thought that was a hand up. That was just a ponder. The economy, all they're asking is to update our, whatever we're, we use in the next comprehensive plan update. And so we would, we would follow that direction and update our economic vitality element, which is also, now that we have an economic vitality commission, they go through quite a good process to update their piece and then we roll that into the comp plan. Transportation, as you know, we're in the middle of the mobility master plan that will talk about all of these things. So we're in good shape there that we're, that that plan is underway. This is the process, are you ready for the process? You look like you're ready for the process. The next steps, if you would like, is to give comments to PSRC before September 16th. As you can see, we're the very end of the process in the summer of 2019. And then once they get all the comments from us, then they, they, there's a, next steps in your plan that they do the general assembly and they talk all about it and they should have something adopted by spring of 2020. Are there questions or?
First, Councilmember Goodman.
So Trish, what you just went over was what, the local implementation actions that are in the draft?
In the multi-county plan policies.
And Issaquah's response, is that your, your sort of response or status of how Issaquah has performed, the status of Issaquah's performance so far under those?
Right.
Okay.
Sort of my evaluation as to, can we meet that? If that's the 2050 goal, can we meet that local action by what we either are doing right now or what we're planning on doing in the future?
Okay. I guess the one that seems super light to me is the regional collaboration regarding funding sources. So that's number one. That continues to be a significant source of concern.
Yes.
And it should be.
Yes.
For everyone, because as we're, especially this cities, counties that are taking on numbers that maybe exceed, doing more than their fair share, and that pot of money gets more and more diluted each year. The incentives are not really incentives. So I don't know that we have anything here that's of substance continuing to work with. I don't know that that's helpful.
Right, that, it wasn't saying that we have the funding in hand, but it's certainly something that's very important to us.
Sure, it's important to everybody. I guess it would, and I'm not, and I don't know how you would go about this necessarily, but it would be, I don't, I haven't ever seen any acknowledgement by PSRC or any other agency that's involved, that, that funding issues are an issue and, and how, how those become integral to the decisions that cities and counties are making about growth. It's just, we're just, you know, yeah, you'll get, you know, you hope to get more money to help with the decision that you've made to take more growth. You hope to get, we hope to get you more money that helps with your infrastructure. That has not necessarily borne out to be the case.
Right.
So that still remains my number one concern. It used to be a carrot. We talked about this six or seven years ago.
Right, it was.
And I don't think it is anymore, but yet it seems like we've got more jurisdictions jumping in. And if it's no longer much of a carrot, then I don't know what it is. We don't really have enough substantive information here and I think that it's not, in my limited involvement with PSRC, it doesn't seem to get recognition.
Councilmember Hunt, did you have a question or comment?
I have a question. So when we saw this last time, we sent in a letter or the mayor sent a letter, and one of the concerns was the, that Issaquah has two transit centers as HCT and that may create increased competition for limited transportation funding. So I wondered, that was sent to PSRC and I wondered if there had been response or change or if that had been addressed or?
Right, I put the response in your packet. And when we had that concern at first, we didn't know yet if we were a core city or a high-capacity transit city. And our fear was that if they made us a high-capacity transit city and not a core city, they weren't counting our two transit centers. And so since we came back as a core city, which is a higher level of priority than a high-capacity, than a high-capacity center, the, the comment was moot because we are the higher level of getting priority of funding versus if we were designated as a high-capacity transit center.
Okay.
And so our worries were, they were valid, but they, it turned out to be even better because we're a core city.
Okay, thank you.
Trish, I had a question, which is, one of the things we've talked about all along was, and I don't see necessarily reflected here, but tell me how we're addressing this concern that we have that as a city that has been extremely proactive in accepting growth, right? I look in the area, and there's other cities that have been very proactive also, but we have taken arguably more than our fair share, right, for Vision 2040. And whether or not, the concern was that, you know, you re-baseline everything and you just say, everybody gets 15%, right? Or everybody gets 18% or whatever, some number. And how do we, wanting to see something that takes into account how close to some theoretical capacity municipalities already are?
I think part of that is the, the funding piece, is that we need to, we need to be stronger in our negotiating for the funding because you're right, that it's not a carrot anymore. There's so many jurisdictions are going after it. And those that are, have really tried to accommodate it and have done everything they can, I think should get a, a better seat at the table than some of them that just are saying they're a regional center, but they haven't put anything else in place.
But I'm talking more about how targets flow down to, like, down to the county level, right?
Right. And that's in the King County-wide policies and that's why PSRC said that would be really good to try to get those to link up with the infrastructure funding because they don't now. And when we asked that question, why don't they? Because we made our commitment, you guys should make your commitment to help, and they said, wow, that's a really good question.
I mean, I would just like to see principles flow down to the county. I mean, if hypothetically, we, let's say there were another city nearby that had, that didn't have areas of high density the way we do, that had all, you know, single-family, low-density, you know, if such a city existed, you would hope that they would get a higher fractional target than we would.
Right.
Right? Because we've done so much to accommodate the growth that's occurred in the last 20 years.
Right.
So it's really, to me, it's about that number.
Right.
And it's also important, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying money isn't important, but I want to see us have targets that reflect the good work that we've done thus far. There, Councilmember Goodman.
So just because I want to be clear what you're talking about and make sure we're all on the same page. That's not part of this exercise though, correct?
Correct.
The numbers part is a separate. The numbers part is a separate negotiation.
The numbers are done at King County, but they're based on principles that flow down from PSRC, right?
Right.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how.
That's the little graphic. The Vision 2050 and the multi-county planning policies have all of the sort of the guiding principles and all the pieces, but the actual growth targets are negotiated in the countywide planning policies that are a separate document, separate groups, negotiated.
I understand that, but what's PSRC's involvement in that?
I'm there at the table as part of the negotiators, but it's mostly the county and the county's cities.
So can we make -- can we have a comment in here that the Vision 2050 should reflect those policies to whatever words we want to use to recognize and somehow help out the jurisdictions who have played super well in the sandbox?
Right, because I think you're right. PSRC should be backing up the areas that are providing the growth accommodation when we sit down and negotiate with the counties. I think they should be -- have our backs on that.
And get some sort of credit for something, yeah.
Other questions, comments? Interim City Administrator.
Thank you. So what we are looking for tonight is direction from council in terms of comments that you want to make sure that we pass on to PSRC during this comment period. As Trish Hanenin said this evening, our comment window closes on mid-September, and so we want to make sure this is your opportunity to react to the draft plan that was in your packets and to the policies that were presented this evening. So if you have any other comments, I'll just want to summarize the comments that I heard. First was that we should make a comment to the effect of having PSRC acknowledge the lack of regional funding to address growth needs, and that it used to be an incentive for taking on growth. And we would encourage them to help be an advocate for us for funding in the future. And then also the comment that we want to ensure that any new targets that would be adopted as a result of this plan, that it takes into account the growth that we have already welcomed above our initial targets and also the capacity that we have for the new targets that we would be assigned. Any other comments we want to be sure to provide?
Councilmember Walsh.
I would just maybe adjust how you make that latter statement to talk about whether or not any growth that's happened as a result of 2040 planning would be accounted for in 2050, or whether things are going to get reset.
Any other comments? Anything else from the administration? That I'm going to ask if any members of the public wish to speak on this topic.
I would have gone home. Okay. So my pet topic for PSRC is to figure out a way to get funding for other things other than capital, capacity, and roads, infrastructure. We need to more easily fund transit capacity and transit service, because we need to get cars off of the road, not build more road or vehicles, right? So the people -- and we don't do that's getting a little bit better, but they're still focusing their money on that type of capacity. So, great.
Thank you for your comment. Interim City Administrator, anything else?
Wait.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Goodman.
I guess, following up on Connie's comment, I would agree with that. And so if the rest of my fellow councilmembers agree to expand the comments to include that -- my experience in the past has been that those comments don't necessarily get included from the public unless the council asks for it. So that's why I'm bringing it up.
Absolutely fair. I support that also. I mean, the elephant in the room is that one of the potential benefits of having an urban center designation was getting ST3 funding, right? So I think that, you know, part of that, I mean, I think what was said in terms of moving beyond just, you know, vehicle capacity towards infrastructure for high-capacity and mass transit is important, but, you know, maybe part of it is also, how do we help assure that, you know, we're the last thing on ST3? And, you know, I think there's a definite concern in the community that that, you know, the big crown jewel of why we took urban center designation, it would be tragic if that did not happen. So I don't know how we word that as feedback on this, but a recommitment from PSRC towards completing the planned mass transit and high-density or high-capacity transit in the area. Councilmember Goodman?
I'm just not sure that that was the limit of the comment that we heard.
No, I -- right. I mean, I think there was the original, which is make sure it's not just about
Cars.
Cars, building lanes.
Right.
Right. But I'm saying, in addition to that, I, you know, it just brings up that there's also another concern.
Sure. I just, my thought was, based on what I heard, was funding isn't -- funding continues to be an issue. It's not just about cars. It's about ST, you know, bringing that here, but also about other stuff, not just cars and ST3.
Closest comments?
Just wanted to say thank you.
Anything else from anybody before we adjourn? No? Thank you. Thank everybody who might still be watching at this point. And thank you, city staff, for all four of these presentations this evening. We are adjourned.